I'd like to ring to order the city council work session. It is Monday, September 16th, 2013. And this evening, we have three items on the work session. This will be, there will be a special meeting immediately following the work session. Don't, don't, I'll give you a break, though, okay? Before we go to work session. I don't want any sour faces here. You will have a break, okay? As I look around the table, do we need a roll call tonight? I don't think so. I see everybody's in attendance. Thank you very much for being here. And the agenda items for discussion, we'll start out with item one. The first item is a presentation on the priority, excuse me, based budgeting process and its implementation plan over the next five to six months. Winnet Reed, deputy city manager, will present, and also our guests. Winnet?
Good evening, mayor and council members. Thank you. I wanted to do a brief introduction, but I want to, do want to take a step back because I know that we have brought a lot of things before council. We have been talking about performance measures. We've been talking about the strategic action plan and updating that. The performance evaluations that we just totally overhauled. Department strategic and operating plans, and now priority-based budgeting. And I guess for me, it was very helpful to put together a graph or a diagram as to how all of these really fit into a performance management system. And Michael Leoni was nice enough to put this together for us. And performance management program at the city of Goodyear obviously starts with the city, the citizens of Goodyear. And they feed information to city council, their desires, their needs, their wants. And this works its way down to the strategic action plan, which the council adopted a year ago in April. And it has the focus areas. Then on down to department strategic operating plans, there's my little arrow, program assessments, employee evaluations, and performance measures. Another way we can look at it is this component here, this is what we do. These are the services, these are the things that we do to provide those services to our citizens and meet their needs. How we do it? We do it with department strategic and operating plans and the priority-based budgeting process. That's how we do things. And then we measure how well we're doing things through the employee performance evaluations and performance measures and the citizen satisfaction survey. So then we get this feedback loop all the way around. So you'll see, while this may seem like a lot of different pieces that aren't really tied together, they really are aligned into one overall program that really will help us to make decisions and allocate resources on the strategic priorities that the council has set for us. So I wanted to take a few minutes and just briefly explain how this all fits together. But I'm not going to take much more time because we have three guests from the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting that are going to walk us through the priority-based budgeting process. We're already in the process. We have departments working on identifying programs. So they're going to kind of explain a big picture as to what this looks like. We are in the middle of this. This was an action item within the strategic action plan. So council, when you adopted that plan, it contained that action item to develop a priority-based budgeting program for the city. So I'm going to start off by introducing Kathleen Novak. Kathy Novak is currently a senior advisor with the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, nonprofit located in Denver. She's also a part-time lecturer for the Daniels College of Business in the University of Denver. Kathy has 19 years of elected public service, 11 as a member of the Northland City Council, and an additional eight years as mayor until she was term limited. So I'm going to do very brief introductions, and you'll get to know them more through the presentation. And then John Johnson, which I'm probably blocking him right here. John is a co-founder of the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting. He has over 25 years of experience as a practitioner in financial administration for municipalities, counties, school districts, and public universities. And the other co-founder of the Center for Priority-Based Budgeting, Chris Fabian, has provided consulting and advisory services to numerous local governments across the county. His consulting experience is focused on public entities at all levels and advising top municipal managers, department heads, and program directors. So I am going to stop talking, but I'll be available for questions as they go through their presentation. And I will turn the mic over to John.
Thank you so much, Winnet, and thanks for all of you for inviting us to the city of Goodyear tonight. We're very pleased to be able to talk a little bit about what the city is going to undertake for the next few months, a process that, very honestly, is rather new to the scene. But after talking with staff, their vision and their belief in what the city of Goodyear needs to accomplish fits very well with the process that we've encountered. And I just start with this slide because it's the story of my life. I've been a budget director now for about 30 years. And I started out, in the old days, only knowing line item budgets. That's all I really knew. And I knew that it wasn't very satisfactory. I also knew that as I plotted through as the finance director, and I would make wonderful presentations to my councils, they respected me, they liked me, they thought I was doing a good job. But as I was, would walk away from the dais after giving you that 600-pound book that had all the numbers and all the figures and all the things that were so important to me, and I would walk away and I would hear someone say, "What the heck did he just say?" And I realized that I was doing my very best to communicate, but maybe we weren't speaking the same language. I was fluent in my language, I was articulate in my language, but I'm not sure anyone really understood my language. And that's what led me, over time, to look at different budget processes. How could we do something different? How could we talk differently? How could we not spend hours and hours and hours on line items, but really talk about, are we doing what's important to our community? Make it more of a policy discussion. Make it more about what we were doing and less about the numbers. And not being so tied to the numbers that it became an accounting exercise and an accounting document. And that's where I was very intrigued with the concepts of a result-based budgeting. In fact, there was a New York Times bestseller that talked about the price of government, budgeting for outcomes. It was trying to help reinvent the way we talked about budgets. Well, I was very intrigued, but as I watched this story unfold, I realized that it was also a very difficult process, and it was really difficult for organizations to accomplish. And also, that language didn't seem clear. It seemed like we weren't communicating. That's where I met Chris. And we were lucky enough to work together in Jefferson County, Colorado, one of the largest counties in the, in the metro area of Denver. And we were trying to find out, how do we take this wonderful budget book that I'm so proud of, and the strategic plan that the organization is proud of, and put them together? Even on my bookshelf, they didn't touch. That didn't make any sense to me. They needed to integrate. And that's where Chris and I worked together to develop priority-based budgeting, which now we are helping organizations across the country put through. It wasn't my intention that I would be sitting here doing this work. I wanted to be a finance director. I wanted to do my annual financial report. I want to do my budget for my organization. But the overwhelming response and success that this process is having with organizations has led us to believe that this is our mission, to help find organizations just like the city of Goodyear, that has staff that see the vision and have us bring in a process that step by step can get you to where you need to be to have better strategic discussions. But I'm going to have you, you hear from the person that sits on your side of the dais for 19 years. And she'll tell you that that language I was speaking was beautiful, but not very understandable.
Thanks. It's a pleasure to be here with all of you. And it kind of makes me miss a little bit my time as elected official. The further away you get, the better it is. So, and I need to tell you first off why I am here with these two individuals. I had heard them speak a couple times. And the first time, I was really intrigued. I thought, man, I, and it was after I was out of office. I really wish I would have had this in office. I heard them again, and I was teaching a class at the Graduate School of Public Affairs. I thought, I need to have these guys in. This is great for, you know, people who are going into the public sector and going to be managers. And then I was sold. And after that, I went begging them to be, I became a disciple, like, how can I help you get this message across? Because I really think it would have fundamentally changed the way my city did business and the way my council interacted with each other. We had some very difficult times, and I think having a process where we could be on the same page in terms of how we communicate. And we went through some difficulties where we had to go through two, reduction in forces, not fun, very difficult. I think it could have changed the way we did this. So I wanted to offer you my perspective on this process and what it means for me, and what I was feeling as an elected official as I sat down to go through this. First of all, every year, our staff would say, "It's time to look at the budget." And we would all collectively groan. It's like, oh, not again, is it that time already? And our staffs, as John said, wonderful. They top-notch knew what they were doing, no questions asked, very capable, competent people. But as John said, to me, they were speaking a different language. Now, I'm not dumb, I don't think, depends on who you ask. But I have a business degree, I have a master's degree. My dad is a professor of finance. I should have known this stuff. And yet, when we finally got the big budget book, I didn't know what to do with it. My saving grace for the early years on council was the fact that our mayor was a CPA and the president of a company. So we just left it in his lap to do all the heavy lifting. Well, if Don's concerned, he'll bring it up. If there's a real problem, Don will find it. Well, what happened is when I became mayor, Don left, and he said, "Don't worry, I'll always be here, it's not like I'm dying or anything." Unfortunately, eight months after I took office, he died of cancer. It was gone, and we didn't have the capacity within our council. I mean, what do we do now? The sage is gone. So often, didn't know what to do. We're told through our state municipal leagues, through the National League of Cities, that the budget is the most important policy document you have. I had no idea how to connect those numbers, that spreadsheet, this great big binder that we would get with policy, much less how that connected to what it is our citizens expected us to do. We would, and as John said, talking about this different language, to me, it was kind of like an opera in Italian. It's beautiful. I could get caught up in the passion of its authors and musicians. And at the end, I could say, what, and then, well, actually, after the budget, I didn't say what an enjoyable experience, but I could appreciate it. But I still, I couldn't have a conversation about what they said and the dialogue because I really didn't get it. And for me, it was because all I was bombarded with was spreadsheets, after-spreadsheets, and more spreadsheets. And I felt like it was just overwhelming. This is what we looked like after about the sixth budget presentation. And we'd ask staff, can you please do something different because we're just not getting this? If this is all I'm given, these spreadsheets, what am I supposed to do with it? Well, I don't want to look dumb in front of my constituents, so I have to come up with a wise question. I'll check the math. If I can catch a math error, that will prove to my constituents that I spent time going through every page of this. Or I'll find a variance, and I'll find a big number in the parentheses and ask a pithy question, like, can you tell me why we spend so much on office supplies? Which there was never a good answer to. I remember one night, we spent three and a half hours arguing over a $302 line item. It's not even a rounding error in a $50 million budget. Our citizens should have blasted us for that. How do we get caught up in the minutia when we should have been talking about the really important issues of the day? How do we redevelop our dying mall? How do we address our declining revenues? How do we go about cooperating with our neighbors who are growing exponentially when we're a landlocked city? What do we do about our population demographics that show that our original homeowners that moved in in the 50s and 60s are still there, which means our schools are declining in enrollment, which means nobody else wants to come because the school district isn't investing? Those are the kinds of issues we should have been talking about, and we're arguing over $302 line item. So we said, "Staff, please, help us understand things in a different way." And they were very responsive, as staff always is. We got graphs and charts, and they're wonderful because it was a different way of looking at it. But now, instead of speaking Greek, they're speaking Latin. Very good at it, but I still didn't know. And I swear, at one point, our wonderful finance director actually said this to us. And if you can't read the cartoon, it says, "I'll pause for a moment so you can let this information sink in." Again, what was I supposed to do with it? How, not only how do I understand what this means, how do I tie this to the vision that we created, our master plans that we came up with, the feedback we got from our citizen surveys? But the bigger question is how do I get the things done that I was elected to do? And we, as we all run, you know, we're always accused of making promises to citizens that politicians just never seem to be able to fulfill. Well, I would go to NLC, I would go to our state league meetings, and I would learn about wonderful things going on in other communities. I'd bring it back, and we couldn't have the discussion because we didn't know how, what the impact would be on the budget. And when everybody's coming back with ideas, there is enough money to fund them, and we had no real way of talking about whether or not something had merit, whether or not something was affordable, without it getting political and nasty, and people accusing, well, you just don't support me, which is not where we need to be. If we had a process, and if we had a tool that we could use, it would help us, I think, certainly deal with those kinds of things. My big frustration as an elected official is that I didn't know what questions to ask beyond the math errors, beyond the numbers in the parentheses, and beyond the bottom line. Well, looks like this bottom line number is bigger than this one. That's good, right? I didn't know what the number was telling us. Are we in a good shape, bad shape? Do we need to raise fees, raise taxes, cut expenses? I couldn't tell from that spreadsheet. When I heard Chris and John talk, first off the bat was they gave me a set of questions. Suddenly, it was like, oh, these are the right questions. What do we do? What should we be doing? Are we doing the things that are important to our community, and how well are we doing it? Are the resources, our finite dollars, are we getting the biggest bang for the buck that we can? How do we actually have a tool that we can use to have the conversations about, maybe there's things that we don't need to be doing anymore? How can we objectively evaluate that and bring those up and discuss? Because we could free up those dollars to leverage other programs, or, you know, to leverage those to do even more of what we really wanted to do. And then that's when I saw their tool, and that's what really intrigued me, and that's why I begged them to help spread the message. And I think as you go through this and hear this and actually see the tool that you all have added to your toolbox, I think you'll be thrilled as excited as I am to go on and through this process, and how it will change the conversations that you're already having, so.
And as Chris and I developed this process and it unfolded, we did see that all of a sudden, we were communicating better with everyone in the organization. Our county commissioners, our administration, our departments, our other elected officials. Because in the county government, we had the sheriff, we had the clerk and recorder, we had the treasurer, we had other elected officials who also were frustrated. And we finally found the common ground where we all, as Kathy would say, were hearing how good the opera could be. And this is where we developed our concept of fiscal health and wellness, really just to help Jefferson County, Colorado. But as we wrote about it, as we shared it with other organizations, we started getting a lot of interest, and people were asking us, could you please show us how you would do this? And so we worked with a community in California very early on, and their city manager said after this process was over, he was intrigued because he expected that it would change everything we have. We'd have to get all new information, we'd have to change our whole budget system, we'd have to just start brand-new. And what he found out was, it wasn't that we had to change everything, we just had to have a different way of looking at it. That perhaps, in these tough economic times, in the times that we're facing where we're making choices that, in good times, we don't, really don't have to make, well, we're able to focus a new lens, a new way to look at this, that's not quite so cloudy, that's not quite so blurry because of the stress that we're under. And this community was having to cut back their budget 30% after cutting their budget 30% before, in the year before, and facing some really tough times. Fairfield, California, which is in the Napa Valley, you would never expect that they would be facing such difficulties, but they did have a lot of problems. And the city manager said, "You didn't reinvent the wheel, you just gave us a different way to look at it and a different way to have conversations." And so we moved on to many other organizations, and I think you can see, it's illustrative, they're small, they're large, they're cities, they're counties, they're east coast, they're west coast, they're Midwest. We've had a lot of success in tailoring this to small, large, whatever their issues. Some have ample resources, others are really struggling. It's had the flexibility to adapt to the needs of that particular organization. And almost a year ago, it was also declared a best practice by the International City County Management Association, ICMA, as well as the Alliance for Innovation, which I know you're all familiar with, located in the Phoenix area. And we also were fortunate to co-author a white paper with the Government Finance Office Association, again emphasizing that the wave of the future is for organizations to undertake a priority-based budgeting regimen, that this is the new direction for city government to be able to survive what Bob O'Neill, the president of ICMA, has called "the decade of local government." Federal and state resources are dwindling faster and faster. We, as local government practitioners, are going to have to be the ones to help address more specifically the needs of our communities because, at the higher level, they're really having difficulties and may not be able to be as influential and helpful as they have been in the past.
After this presentation, we're going to, we're going to walk through the methodology as fast as we can, just to give you a sense of what the organization's going to go through, but really want to show you the punchline, which is the tool that you'll have at the end of this. But for further reading, we've been fortunate enough to write a lot about the process. So through the Government Finance Review, ICMA's professional journal, to hear more about what other communities are going through, we welcome you to go ahead and check up on some of these resources. The, the process of fiscal health and fiscal wellness really begins on a foundation of fiscal health, and that's what you see up here. This organization, what Goodyear has gone through, has presented some stability in terms of your overall fiscal health, such that we can build upon where you're at and actually move forward with the fiscal wellness process, our approach to the long-term, which is priority-based budgeting and what we're going to describe for the rest of the day. As John and I were practitioners in Jefferson County, we needed a way to discuss what priority-based budgeting was all about with our own elected officials. So we took this newspaper article out of the California newspaper, this is back in 2007, and you can see the headline, "To Deal With Their Shortfall," it was $14.5 billion they did in across-the-board budget cut. You read the quote up there from the governor's office justifying why we did it. "An across-the-board approach spreads the reductions out as evenly as possible, so no single program gets singled out." That's why we do across-the-board budget cutting, because it's hard to do anything else. But you see the reaction that the governor's approach would be like a family deciding to cut its monthly mortgage payment, the dining-out tab, and the Netflix subscription each by 10%, rather than eliminating the restaurant and DVD spending in order to keep up the house payments. That's what we would do in our own household, of course, but how in the world are we able to do the same thing in local government? It's difficult. I admit, I'm a Netflix subscriber, I'd rather not have to cut it from my budget. But how do we, how do we begin this process of differentiation? And most importantly, how do we come to agreement on what are the mortgage payment services that we offer? That's what this process is all about. Now, one thing that's been very fascinating, as we've had the opportunity to do this work across the country, is that some of the rating agencies have started to pay attention. We saw so many communities dealing with the Great Recession resorting to across-the-board budget cuts. And you see here from Moody's Commentary, "Across-the-board cuts can be a way to avoid tough decisions." They don't take into account what the implications are. It's easy to balance the budget. Anybody can do it. We can implement an across-the-board budget cut. But what we see is that it disregards what's going to happen when you do that. Instead, they're saying, "We want to see local governments who take into consideration community values and try to approach targeted cuts," or not only on the cutting side, adding more money to the resource base and starting new programs. How are we adding programs that actually take into account community values? It works both ways. And we've seen three of our communities actually see their bond rating either maintained at a very strong level or actually increased, which is important to us as we're researching what's actually going on here. The next slide, this is one of John's favorites, and I've had the pleasure to work with John as we were just discussing earlier, since about 2006. And I've learned so much from John and his career in local government and his passion for local government, and this slide really gets to that. This came from Governing Magazine, where they talk about across-the-board budget cutting, spreading the pain evenly, but also spreading mediocrity in the organization. These times are undoubtedly tough, and we need to focus our limited resources on what we can do best in this decade of local government. Spreading mediocrity across the organization is not what we're in business to do. So again, whether we're talking about an across-the-board budget cut or across-the-board increases, this is the whole philosophy of what we're trying to avoid. So let's get into it. We want to discuss a little bit about the methodology, about the steps in the process, and about the logic of what priority-based budgeting entails. And we're going to do it with these five fundamental steps, starting with, number one, determining the results. What are we, what are we here for? What are we in business to do? Step two, how do we actually gain some clarity around these results? What do they actually mean? Step three, identifying the programs and services we offer. So that gets to the question of, well, what is it that we do? So that by step four, we can evaluate everything that we provide and determine those mortgage payment services and differentiate them from the Netflix, if we can do that. And then ultimately, step five is bringing this together in the budget discussion so that we're not just talking about numbers and line items in the 600-page book, but we're actually bringing it together in a tool that we can use to drive different conversations. So the very first question, what, what are we in business to do? And as Kathy mentioned, we framed the entire process around these key questions that we need to be able to answer. This is something that we've learned, you actually have a lot of work done already. You, the, the slide that Winnet demonstrated at the beginning of the presentation came from your strategic action plan, and that was shared with us, and we said, fantastic, you have a starting place. When we talk about results, why are we in business? We are talking about those high-level overarching reasons why we exist. We sometimes ask an organization, "If you went out of business completely tomorrow and stopped providing any services, would anybody notice that you're gone?" And we say, you all kind of shake your head up there, and, yeah, of course, of course, people would notice that you're gone. But why? That's what we mean by results, these reasons for existence. And we're so pleased from the work that we've seen from your strategic action plan, that you've already started down this path. You've identified the why. Why are we here? What are we trying to accomplish? In priority-based budgeting, so that you know how the process works, when we start to work with a community, and this is an example from Grand Island, Nebraska, what you see up here are three different kinds of, of results. We have community results, these are reasons why we provide services to our citizens. And you see up here in Grand Island, they have things like stewardship of the environment or achieving a safe community. Mobility options got to their transportation objectives, and strategic, sustainable, and maintained development. These help us understand why we're in business in terms of providing services directly to citizens. Now, you also see towards the bottom what we call governance results, things like being good financial stewards, maintaining a high-quality workforce, and regulatory compliance. These are also important for us to articulate because they help us understand why we offer the internal functions of government. One of the lessons that I learned from John as we were getting into the development of this process is that when we take the functions of an organization that he was used to running, the finance department, the budget department, it's a very tough case to make that budget helps us achieve a safe community. So if we went down the path of a, of a process evaluating budget development or payroll or accounts payable, to the degree it helped us achieve a, a safe community or mobility options, those programs would sink to the bottom. Now, John joked and said, well, that's what everybody believes in the first place, is that we're overhead, and if we just got rid of the overhead, we'd all be out of this mess, or at least we'd shoot the messenger, and no one would tell us we had a budget problem. But through our, our process, we needed to get far more clear on the reasons why we have those internal functions. And that's why you see having a way to articulate why we offer internal functions in terms of governance is going to be key. So keep in mind, as this process moves forward, we have these community-oriented results, and we have governance results. You do see up there what we call quality service results. Those are items that help an organization determine why every program exists. Every program you offer should be efficient. Every program you offer should have a degree of transparency. So as you think through this and you're wondering, how does efficiency get taken into consideration? We're going to strive to make sure that every program is efficient, whether it's a mortgage payment or a Netflix service of government. You see up here those strategic focus areas, and again, just reiterating the point, when we saw the information presented from your strategic action plan in terms of those overarching results, economic vitality, quality of life, a sense of community, and that fiscal and resource management that really gets to what we mean by good governance, this made us comfortable that you, you have done that work. And that is truly your role, as elected officials, to identify, why are we here? What are we in business to do? So these will be actually the basis for how we move forward in the rest of the process. In your slides, you'll also see, these are examples from In your slides, you'll also see, these are examples from other communities, Boulder, Colorado, Chandler, Arizona, Queen Creek, Sacramento, and the different types of results that they've articulated. The point that we wanted to make sure that you recognize is that your results are unique unto you, they're Goodyear's results, they're not the same as every other community's, and that's what we're going to get into in this description of the second step, which is creating result definitions. What you see up here, this is from the city of Boulder, their results being on the left-hand side, creating an accessible and connected community, that's their way of describing their transportation goal. An economically vital community, a healthy environment and community, that's Boulder. Inclusive and socially thriving, for those of you who have not been to Boulder, and you go, you are going to feel included, whether you like to or not, as you walk down Pearl Street, you're going to get welcomed.
Flow down Pearl Street.
Yeah, or flow down Pearl Street these days, that's right. And that's where we have safe community as well. What you see on the right-hand side are what we call result maps. What we found in the work is that many communities talk in terms of creating a safe community. When we worked in Cincinnati, Ohio, they wanted to create a safe community, Goodyear has elements of a safe community, and Grand Island, Nebraska had a safe community, but no two communities defined it the same way. There are different issues going on in Cincinnati than there are in Grand Island. So we need to get a little clearer about what these results actually mean, and that's what you'll see in terms of the result definitions. Again, this is information that we've been able to glean from your strategic action plan, and we commend you. Not every community, when we get started, has this work completed. You have spent a lot of time to flesh out, what do these results mean, and we're impressed by that. It gives us that great starting place to be able to move on. This is Grand Island, you see, just as an example, here's stewardship of the environment, and you see all the different ways that they're describing how they become good stewards of their environment. These definitions are a way to communicate how they're going to measure whether or not they're successful. Are they able to manage and mitigate factors that impact environmental quality and sustainability? Encourage energy conservation and efficiency through education, incentive programs, the provision of alternative solutions? I think you get the point. Through the creation of the result maps, again, work that you've completed, we now know far better what these results mean to you in Goodyear. This is from one of your neighbors, safe community, and the point that we want to impart here is that you take a result, something that we all have familiarity with, achieving a safe community, and your mind instantly goes to concepts like police, fire, EMS. What we see, and what we see in the work that you've done, is that something like a safe community is more broad than that. It absolutely includes elements of law enforcement and emergency response, but we start to get into safe roads, safe travel, safe drinking water, safe air. And you see here in Chandler, in that bottom-left area, the ability to engage with youth and families. We need to have this complete understanding of all the ways that you achieve your results so that we can move into that complete evaluation of programs. Furthermore, on the governance result, again, an area where you've done some work, we need to be clear and complete about all the reasons that our internal functions exist. So as you keep in mind those parallel paths, community results and governance, the governance programs will be scoring themselves against the criteria that define why they're in existence as well. So now we know what we're in business to do. The next strategic question is, well, what exactly do we do? And part of our realization is that local government is complex. We do a lot, and it's difficult sometimes in your position, it's difficult in any administrator's position, to get their arms around, how do we prioritize things if we don't know exactly what we do? So departments are actually underway right now, creating an inventory of all of the services or programs that they provide. One of the things that John and I recognized early on in the work, talking to other organizations, is that as they embarked on a prioritization process, they would often talk in terms of which department is more important than another department. They'd have the conversation, "Is the police department our top priority? Is police more important than parks?" And those are tough conversations, you already know the answer to that question. What we found is that when we can dive into the program level and say, "What are all the programs that we offer in the police department? And how relevant are they to the results we're trying to achieve?" Versus the programs that are offered within parks, we get a far different perspective. Most organizations where we work have anywhere between 300 and 400 programs, again, giving you the sense of the order of magnitude of how complex the services we provide actually are. In Lehigh County, Pennsylvania, they had over 1,000 services, and same in Edmonton, Alberta. Again, as we go through the process, which is underway right now, you're going to get an eye-opening perspective on all of the various services that you provide. So now we move into, we know what we're in business to do, we have results, we have result definitions, and we now have our program inventory, we know what we do. The next step is this evaluation. How are we going to understand collectively and come to agreement on which programs are the highest relevance? And how do we begin that differentiation process? So we need common evaluation criteria. I think everybody understands results will be the main evaluation criteria, but one of the things that we also recognized as we were developing the process is that especially in local government, results alone could not help us tell the story of why we offer a program. For instance, we might be offering a program because we're mandated by a higher level of government to do it. That might not have anything to do with results, but we need to take that into consideration somehow. That's what you see over there on the right-hand side, these additional criteria besides results, what we call basic program attributes. Reliance on the city to provide the program. Are citizens entirely reliant upon you to receive a service, or can they turn elsewhere? Are there other service providers, be it public sector or private sector? We're trying to understand that as well. The overall cost recovery of a program. What about programs that bring in their own revenue? They bring in grants, they bring in fees, charges for service, we need to take that into consideration as well. These basic program attributes that you see on the slide are illustrative of the various criteria that we talk about and we bring into the evaluation process. You all will have a say in discussing which of these evaluation criteria are truly appropriate for the city of Goodyear to take into evaluation, but they add so much to the process as we go through scoring. Now, we want to quickly tell you about how scoring works. It's a simple process, we don't want to get into the weeds here, but here's the idea, okay? For every program, the departments are going to have the opportunity to communicate, does their program have a high influence on achieving the result? A low degree of influence, or no influence whatsoever? So we developed a simple scoring scale, so you can go through and communicate this point, but we wanted to recognize that it's not a yes or no question. Does the program achieve a result, yes or no? Some programs have a great deal to do with the achievement of a result, and other programs have something to do with achieving the result. So we have an idea of a scoring scale, as programs are scored against results. Similarly, on the attributes, and I think you'll find this interesting, it's also not enough to ask a yes or no question, "Is the program mandated?" We want to ask, "How mandated is the program?" So we have higher scores for higher degrees of mandates, we have lower scores for things that might be your own self-imposed mandates, your own local ordinances, your own policy, your own resolution. And then, some programs aren't mandated whatsoever. So we'll apply this exact same idea of a scoring spectrum to all the categories. Here's one more, just for example, and we draw your attention to it because we'll bring it back up as we demonstrate the model. In the basic program attribute, reliance on the city to provide the program, we're wanting to know, is the city the sole service provider of this program? Meaning, if you stop doing it, nobody else would be able to provide this program or provide this benefit to a citizen. That's high on the reliance scale, versus on the opposite end of the reliance scale, there are plenty of other service providers. They might be in the public sector, they might be in the private sector, and that's all we're trying to understand. All right, so a little hard to read this slide, but a very important point. What you see, and I'll use the pointer here to demonstrate, these are all the scoring criteria. Here's your basic program attributes, mandated, cost recovery, change in demand, reliance on the city, and then here are your results, for which you have those result definitions. Safe city, and this is the city of San Jose, by the way. Prosperous economy, green, sustainable city, attractive, vibrant community. As departments score each of their programs in the inventory, they're scoring their programs against every single category using that criteria. Here's what's fascinating about this. We're not trying to align one program with one result, or the result that it best fits. We want a thorough evaluation of every single scoring criteria. When we did this process in the city of Boulder, the business community really rallied behind it, and they told us something that was really meaningful to us. They said, "This is the closest approximation to the idea of return on investment that they'd seen before." I said, "Oh, this is intriguing, tell us more." They said, "A dollar spent on a program that achieves not just one result, but two results, or three results, or even four, is a leveraged tax dollar. It's as if that dollar's being spent again and again and again to achieve result after result after result." And that's so profound to us, that's what we're trying to measure. And the programs that end up scoring the highest overall have the greatest relevance to your overall results with this whole concept of return on investment, a leveraged dollar. That's what we're after, we want to leverage our resources. Coming out of the process where departments have the opportunity to score their programs, there will be a review, so rest assured, there's some level of quality control provided so that we know, we believe that these programs have an accurate score coming out of that work, but we do believe that giving the departments that first opportunity to score their own programs, they know the most about the programs, but with that quality review, there will be some discussion to make sure that those scores are vetted. So that coming out of that vetting process, every program will end up with a final score. That's what you see here, this is not meant to be, it's one of our worst charts, I admit, but every one of these lines represents a program, this is from the city of Boulder, and here's the scoring scale from left to right, so the higher the score means that the program demonstrated a higher degree of relevance overall. And you see that there are a host of programs up here that scored really highly. These are what we call quartile-one programs, they're differentiated from this next group, also scoring really highly, very relevant programs, they're just not as highly relevant as quartile-one, they call them quartile-two, is differentiated from quartile-three, and ultimately quartile-four programs have less to do overall with achieving results. So hopefully, everybody sees, you too will have all of your programs differentiated. It's no different than scoring a set of test scores on a curve, that's the type of analysis that we're going through to make sure we come up with meaningful breaks. And then, as we look at these programs in quartile-one, and we understand how much they each cost, we want to see, how much are we spending on our top priority programs, quartile-one? Versus how much are we spending on quartile-two, three, or four? And in the city of Boulder, when they first developed their spending array, this is what you're looking at right now, here are their quartile-one programs, here their quartile-two, here's three and four, and John and I presented this in front of their elected officials, and the city council looked at this, and they said, "This is totally understandable. This is such a clear and easy-to-understand picture for the first time. More money in quartile-one and quartile-two equals good, less money in quartile-three and quartile-four also equals good." And it's also important to recognize that there's $7.5 million in quartile-four, $21.5 million in quartile-three, that spells opportunity. We want to talk about, how do we look at how we're investing our resources and ask the question, "Do we have a chance to reallocate some of those dollars?" We want to constantly be focusing on allocating resources to quartile-one and quartile-two as our highest priorities, and asking questions and opening discussion about opportunities in quartile-three and quartile-four. This was, as far as John and I got when we were in Jefferson County, was being able to come up with this understanding of where the money is currently. As we started to get into this work, we realized we needed a tool, we needed to bring it to life, and that's where we actually went through and developed a model so that we could dig into this information, really make use of it, and drive different conversations.
And while we know that we'll still have to put a budget book together, we'll still have to have line items, we still have to have those numbers, what we want to be able to use for the council, for the staff, is to have a different discussion and look through the new lens. Instead of handing you a 600-pound budget book and asking questions, which only lead to discussion about line items, discussion about numbers, and discussion about the math, we want a tool where you can actually ask these questions, which we don't think come out very well in an old-fashioned budget book. What are the programs that are the highest priority in terms of what we are expecting to do? What are the programs that we really are mandated to do? Do we know? Have we articulated them? How much do we spend on them? What programs are we offering because we've imposed them on ourself, and they may no longer be relevant as they were in 1952, when we've passed that particular ordinance or passed that policy? What programs are offered where there are no other options for our citizens, that we are the only game in town? Do we know? Do we know where we might partner? Do we know where there might be other opportunities for looking for those kind of partnerships? Do we know, are we seeing a level of demand increase in some programs? Or are we seeing a decrease in demand? That should have an important aspect on how we allocate resources. But does that 600-pound budget book tell us that? Do we know, are we spending to achieve our results? Is that something we're talking about? Or are we looking at numbers, and we're looking at line items? And so, what we want to do is show you how those questions that we just talked about can really now be the focus of your conversation. Even though the old ways will have to still be continued, is that the way we want to continue our discussions? Can we all speak the same language? And I think we're going to demonstrate here that, yes, Kathy and I are now going to speak the same language to you.
Very quickly, in terms of what you're looking at here, so this is the city of Boulder again, here's their quartile-one, two, three, and four spending. What we're looking at are the community-oriented programs. Remember, we had the two tracks, community and governance. We can quickly toggle to look at all the governance programs. Don't let the scaling fool you, it just shrunk up in size, but this is 16% of their total budget. Here's something that's really interesting to us about governance in total. Not as good of a profile overall as what we just saw on the community side, but all that quartile-two spending is very good as well, that's also highly relevant. Sometimes, when we approach a conversation about prioritization, as John and I talk to other governments, there's an inherent assumption that our internal programs are less of a priority than the programs that we offer directly to citizens. That seems intuitively correct, but as you see here in the chart, even governance has quartile-one and quartile-two programs, programs without which we're not going to stand a chance providing programs to the community, so we have to understand that. Even within our internal services, these are important services. Quartile-three, quartile-four, opportunities abound for the city of Boulder, and they were really diving into those, don't worry. But this is such an important realization, why we do that differentiation of community versus governance. We can put the pictures together, so here's overall for the city of Boulder. We won't get into this in grave detail, but rest assured that we can still go through every single accounting fund, so if we wanted to focus on the general fund and how we're going to balance the budget there, we can isolate the general fund spending and only look at balancing the budget in the general fund. I will put the total community picture.
Do the utilities?
Yeah, all right. Real quickly, because everybody asks, "Well, why not only do the general fund?" And we'll just show you a quick example. Here's the water utility fund in the city of Boulder, here's their drinking water enterprise, and you see a lot of quartile-two spending going on, so that's highly relevant, very high priority. But you also see some quartile-three and quartile-four spending going on, even in the water fund. In Boulder, before they automatically go out and ask for a rate increase for their water enterprise, they're diving into these to say, "Can we eliminate some of our quartile-four spending and actually stave off a rate increase?" So very important dialogue going on, and something that we might otherwise miss when we just only look at the general fund. Thanks, Kathy. So back to the citywide picture, here's another filter which allows us to pull apart any of the departments. So everybody always wants to know, for example, "How might the police department do?" So I'm sure you're all guessing pure quartile-four, right? So here's...
He's joking, he's joking. Joking.
No, my audience.
Be careful.
You got their attention.
Kathy, I will move over this way now.
That's right.
A better punchline, right? So, look at police. Top-loaded in quartile-one and quartile-two. That is what you would expect, of course. Why is that? We joke in other organizations, "Is this because public safety always gets what they want? Of course, they're going to be quartile-one and quartile-two." And the answer is no. The reason that they...
Can I stop you? I'm sorry, should have substantiated this before we started. Sometimes the council wants to stop something and ask a question, and I see we have councilman's tip.
Now, how do you want to, do you want to do it now, or you want to do it at the end?
He's almost done.
We can take him while we're going, that may, we want to make sure we get to your questions, so that'd be fine.
Is it a burning question, that you feel you forget, and you know, is it part, yeah?
My track record has been...
Yeah.
My track record has of late has been a little off, so I better get it out now while I can remember it. My question is, and this is a great example, is the police department. The police department typically only knows really well what the police department does, and I think if you were to ask the police chief, he'll tell you, "Everything we do is really important." And there's probably some truth in that. And they've got to look very, the way I'm picking this up, is they've got to look through it, and they've got to, if I can use the Play-Doh machine, they've got to shove it through the screen, and we're going to get spaghetti at the end of it, and one's going to be a one, two, three, and four. But at the end of the day, they're grading themselves. And I know you said that there's a check and balance in there, that someone else is going to look at it, but when you get to something as specific as police services or even water distribution, I mean, there's stuff that goes on in water that somebody else needs to know about. How are we balancing that we're not top-heavy in our rating? Is there a... Is there a, I'm just talking in general. I mean, if you've got a specific answer, that's awesome. Because I'm with you all the way until I get to grade myself.
There are multiple ways of doing this. And we've discussed internally as an organization, you know, there's the peer review process and different processes. We are looking at doing something similar to peer review, but at a different level and still looking, you know, at involving the directors. But they won't be looking at their particular departments and involving them in some of the verification of those scores. So I might partner with Jerry over here and we might look at sense of community, but Jerry won't get to do his department. He'll get to do public works and things like that. That process is still kind of being fine-tuned. And what we want to do is make sure that we do have a second set of eyes looking at all of this. Obviously, the departments will do their first blush at it and then we'll have a second review of that. And a third.
Is, just from the center, is there, do you have a generic recommendation that you tend to make or?
Yes, and I think the great discussion we had this afternoon was to really balance what we're doing in other communities and integrate that with the process that they want to set up here so that you can be assured there will be a second set of eyes, a validation. And the nice part about it is, when you get to the final tool, even if you see something and you say, are we sure? You'll still be able to see and question those things. But if we end up with 500 programs, we don't want you all to be sitting around the table trying to go through each one of those things. So we want to do this, and I have seen 100% that when we get through peer review, there has been that second set of eyes. But we also know that the departments, especially what we're seeing in an organization like yours, they really do take it seriously. And because we're not asking them, you tell us, is this program quartile one or four? Against the criteria that you've established based on results on those attributes, they have to fairly grade the program. And so it's difficult to cheat the system. And if we found some people, we had a health director that decided because every one of their programs was Latin, that he would just score it all four because no one would know what they were. So a program called Zoonosis got scored a four because he thought, no one will ask. Well, guess what? Everybody asked. And they found out that, why did you score Zoonosis a four for effective mobility? What is it? Oh, you're asking me the question. And it got caught and everything was rescored. So it's very easy to score, and I think that the departments are interested to find out, are there things that we're doing that might not be as relevant? And that's where the buy-in becomes important. And I think that set of eyes gives you that assurance, but we also are hearing from the departments so they can demonstrate why they believe that program is relevant against the results that you've established.
And I just want to emphasize that the tool you're seeing, we will have this tool. We'll be able to go in and look at the departments, look at the programs in the different quartiles, have those conversations. And as you review this, you can ask those questions along this. So it's a continuous review process of that scoring.
Excellent.
Joe?
He's a former budget manager, five years removed, six years, somewhere around there. We've been talking about this for a very long, long time, and I'm glad that it's finally coming to fruition. One of my key questions, I firmly believe that we're in a new economic deal here. The days of the quick, large returns are gone. And to me, we have to figure out a way to better manage our money and create our own money internally, which to me, always continually looking at dividing not just our services or one, two, three and four, but how can we provide them more cost-efficient, more effective? My question is, leaving that out, and I see the scoring, where does this discussion come into place to keep people still looking to ensure, yeah, we're doing it this way, but you know what? Actually, there's a more cost-efficient and effective way of delivering that same service? Where does that discussion come in after the grading?
Excellent. One of the things that we believed in, I'd done all my career, was we went there first. Let's go to efficiencies. Well, what happened was, organizations, especially in the last few years because of this difficult economic time, they're just all studying efficiencies. We believe that first, we want to ask the question, what's relevant to us? Once we know what's relevant to us, then those programs in quartile one and two, the most relevant programs and the ones that cost us the most are the first ones we should study for efficiency, because that's where we'll get the most bang for the buck. Do we need to study the efficiency of a program that's quartile four? No, that's not the question about that program. We don't care how efficient it is. We need to ask, should we continue doing it? Is that relevant to us anymore? And one of the biggest discussions we had in Jefferson County, they were spending money on a program that truly, if I evaluated it, it was the most efficient, cost-effective, well-run, well-appreciated program in the whole county. But the program was having citizens come to the county and having their sick tomato plants analyzed to see if they could make them well. I don't care how efficient that program is, it's not relevant to our results. We shouldn't be spending money. So our filter is relevance and then quartile one and two, we now also will know, how much do those cost us? So let's focus on the most costly programs in quartile one, and that's where we ask the departments to study efficiency. But now we can focus on what are the programs where efficiency questions make the most sense after we sift through relevance.
And I appreciate that, because I tend to agree that you're right, is that anymore, we just got to figure out a way, we're going to limited resources and if we're going to still be the top-notch city, which I believe we are, we got to figure out a way to continue to be able to deliver that service and still provide those resources. So thank you.
Exactly, exactly.
Okay.
In the time that we have left, let's talk a little bit more about how to use the filters to bring out some resources.
Show the parks and rec department, because I think this helps us show one last filter that's very critical. And as you look at parks and rec, you can see that, boy, there are also relevant programs demonstrating that for most communities, what we do in that area is important to our quality of life as well. Now, some communities that don't have any desire for that, it's not going to be very, very important. But in Boulder, it's equally important. We don't want to say, one, parks is more important or less important than police, but there are things that are equally important. Now, in parks, we also know that they're prone to collect revenues to pay for some of their services. So we don't want to confuse the discussion that if we start eliminating parks programs, that the money that we collect for the fees will still come in and we can give that to the community development department. So we want to use a filter that will also identify, is there a fee or a grant that pays for the program? So we can filter those out. So now we can see, here's how much we're using the tax dollars to spend on parks and recreation programs, which for the City of Boulder, first of all, was eye-opening because in their mind, well, I think parks and rec pays for itself. Some programs do, but some programs don't. So let's be sure we know what the picture is. Now, again, this opens up the conversation, let's at least focus on quartile three and four programs and maybe we could charge a fee. Maybe that's where we could start. Is that a good opportunity to take those programs off of being supported by tax dollars? And maybe there's a fee opportunity. Or maybe we're not charging 100% of the cost of the program, so at least let's refresh our fees. So this helps you see that the filter will let us recognize that there are some programs that do bring in revenue and we need to introduce that to the discussion. But now, remember we had all those attributes? One of the beauties of this tool is we can also now focus on, to ask those policy questions. Those are important for the overall score, but they're also a way that we believe we can now walk around the budget. So that one picture isn't the only way you can look at the budget. So we may be in a council meeting and our mayor may ask me...
And this is where I got really excited, because when I would ask these questions of staff under our old model, they were wonderful in saying, great question. I'll get back to you at our next meeting with the answer, which is wonderful, but I'm right in the middle of this right now and I'm not even going to remember that I asked that question. So for example, you know, we'd go to NLC and we'd be faced with this whole idea of mandates. And my questions were, if it's mandated, does that mean that it's automatically off the table and we can't talk about it? Or number two, I keep hearing about all these unfunded mandates. How can I answer this, citizens who are asking me, how much do we spend on unfunded mandates? So then I asked Chris and John.
And so remember, one of the criteria was, programs that scored a four are those that we've identified as being mandated by a higher level of government. So now you're looking for the City of Boulder at just the programs that scored a four. So this is the profile of mandated programs. Now, the first thing you see is that, boy, heavy in one or two. Kind of changes the perspective maybe that these are all worthless programs. In their case, they would probably be doing the mandated programs anyway because they are important to the results of the community. So, boy, let's not talk about those, but they've got quartile three and four program, but they're mandated. What does that mean? What that means is that we should look at those programs and see, what does the mandate say? Are we potentially over-delivering on that mandate? That's a great question. Pointing, in Jefferson County, the county, their clerk and recorder's office was required to issue license plates. State law says county recorders have to issue license plates. But it didn't accomplish any of our results, but we were mandated to do it. Does that mean we don't talk about it? No. We talked about it and read the statute. What did it say? You must issue license plates. It did not say, with a wait time of five minutes or less in seven convenient locations across the county.
So you're spending money.
Because to staff for a wait time of five minutes or less, there's a cost. To have seven locations that you have to lease, there's a cost. So the discussion became, wow, we're over-delivering on the mandate. Is that the right level of service? Or should we look at different options? Perhaps online, perhaps through the mail. But it opened up the discussion. So the mandate card was no longer, get out of jail free. You still had to have the conversations. But here we're focusing on, let's not worry about quartile one and two first, they're helping us achieve the results. Now, to Kathy's point, and as a finance director, I'm always asked, well, what is the cost of an unfunded mandate? How much are we spending? I had to fill out surveys. And you know what I did for 25 years? I made it up. Because I didn't know. This will let you, now let's take that, remember the filter where we took out program revenues, grants or fees that we get to pay for the program? Let's pull it out. Now we know, here's what we're spending on unfunded mandates, but maybe those unfunded mandates aren't quite as bad as we thought they were because so many of them are still helping us achieve the results. So we can now focus on quartile three and four and we can, at policy level, ask the questions, are we doing more? Or, we're not advocating this, but many elected officials are also saying, can you tell me what the penalty for not doing it is? And if that's less than offering the program, shouldn't we at least have the discussion? And I think it opens up, where would you ever see this in the 600-pound budget book? I don't think so.
One of the other questions that I always had in looking at this is, the question that John and Chris asked at the beginning, if the city just went away, would anybody notice we were gone? And so that attribute on the reliance of the city to provide these services, so they have a filter here, are we the only game in town or not?
So if we choose, remember, a four was, we're the only game in town. A three was, we are the only ones who provide it, but we might be able to contract out. But anything less than a three, there's perhaps another public sector entity that does it or there's a private sector business that does it. So let's put the filter on less than three, which this is every program that we've identified that another public sector or private sector organization also does.
So if you're like me, this is when the light bulb started to go off in my head and I could say, I now have a real question beyond, why are we spending so much in office supplies? So here, you know, for me, the questions would be, look, there are a lot of programs or at least a lot of dollars in quartile three and four that we ought to talk about. If somebody else is doing it, should we be in the business of doing it? Can we partner to do it more effectively at a better, at less cost for us? And then we can even delve into those programs, you know? What's in there that a quartile four program that people aren't relying on us to do, that maybe we do because we've always done it this way? I remember when I first got on council, tennis was a big boom. We built tennis courts and we had tennis lessons. In 20, you know, well, 2010, when I left, no one in my city was playing tennis. Why were we still spending all that money? And doesn't it make sense, perhaps, to turn it into inline roller rinks? Or pickleball. Or whatever it is, exactly. But we can have that conversation about it. And then it's not a small part of the budget. And I'm getting old, I can't see, but as a percentage of the budget on the bottom, 22% of the dollars here are up to talk about. And for me, that was about good governance. How do we partner? How do we really use our dollars effectively? And in this day and age of collaboration and even when you're looking for grants and the community appreciates, look, if we're partnering and leveraging those dollars, we're all so much better off. And that shows not, I mean, we're demonstrating that we are in fact the good stewards of our taxpayers' dollars that we really want to be.
One of the other things that we'll just show you real quickly is, you can combine these filters. So let's look at programs that we are not mandated to do except we might have our own local policy. And we'll turn that on at the same time with the reliance question. So what you're going to see now are all the programs that we're not required to do by a level of government above us that we could change if they're not important and that there are other service providers. Now, let's take out the program revenues. If we're charging a fee for it, let's take those out. This is a significant place to start the discussions about, these are programs that we're not required to do, there's someone else that does it, we're not collecting a fee for it, we're spending tax dollars. If we just focus on quartiles three and four, these are not helping us achieve our results at all. Isn't this a good place, not just to cut, but if we need to start new things, the City of Boulder, this is where they went to look for monies that they could use to start new programs. Why continually use the resources this way? We don't have to cut them, but we could repurpose them. We could reallocate them. And they are mining this to find out, how do we start shifting these resources? And it may take one or two years to retrain people, but at least we can ask the question, these would offer us a place to start the conversation about how to shift resources from something that's unimportant to something that is important. Now, there are tons of permutations and we've gone a little over our time. We can talk about, what are the programs that don't achieve results? In Boulder, they had over $21 million of programs that didn't help them achieve one result to a high degree. They were shocked. We can also say, but what about the programs that do help us? So let's say in Boulder, they wanted to know, what are the programs that highly help us achieve a safe community? How much are we spending of our budget dollars? You can shift it, and here it is. So you can see in Boulder, they were investing, close to 43% of their budget was helping them accomplish a safe community. What a nice representation we can make to our citizens. And the nice thing about it is, there's a little button that for any of the views, you can generate immediately the list of programs that make up the view. So this now shows you all the programs that scored highly achieving a safe community. And you see, police, fire, very high there, but also building safety, some parks and rec programs, because they are there to help us achieve a safe community as well. So this gives us the opportunity to really start asking the questions, what are we doing to achieve a safe community and how much are we spending? And is that enough? Should we do more? This is a way for us to see the budget through a completely different lens that I don't believe after 25 years, the 600-pound budget book would ever let us see. So we thank you for letting us go a little over on your time.
We're not going to let you go yet.
Okay. We're here to take more questions.
This is more important. So Sheri?
Yeah, I really like this. I really think it gives a lot of good information. I'm really kind of excited about this. I don't know if this question is for you or for the city manager. Are we going to, once we switch over and get all this done, are we going to have the chance to kind of look at this on our own before a meeting, to kind of delve into those lists so we can ask those questions rather than when we're just sitting right here?
Councilmember Laura Tonno, I'll answer it this way. One of the things this will actually be, the way we do the budget this coming year. So we're far enough along, we had the conversation this afternoon. We're very pleased with where we're at. We know that we'll have ample opportunity for different reviews throughout this. But I've also had the opportunity to challenge, and Winnet Reed, as far as being the project executive for this. So you'll see tonight, instead of, you know, normal budget discussions and stuff like that, I will be deferring to her for some of these specific questions as far as the process. And then certainly backed up by our esteemed experts at the end of the table. So, with that, Winnet, do you want to answer when that would happen?
Oh, when we would start using this tool to help make decisions.
When they would actually have a chance to start reviewing.
Start reviewing that. So, do you want them playing with it? Because, you know, that can be dangerous too, if, if we don't do it in a group. And so, yeah, yeah. There's so much information, but I can see that, I can see that the timeframe is, it's going to take more time. Am I, am I wrong in assuming that for the process itself? Because that's a lot of things to look through and question. I mean... Well, you know, my, my initial reaction would be, the, the question is, how deeply do you want to get into the weeds? And what this does, this tool gives us, is an opportunity to stay at the 30,000-foot level where we, as elected officials, want to be. And the benefit, I think, of reviewing this as a group and asking those questions, is that we're all, you know, that's the beauty of the councils, that we're hearing how other people view this. What are the things that they're looking for? And then, we all get the same, the same answers. And so, while I think staff will certainly have the data, and you can see in the tool that it backs that all up, all the programs are there. But really focusing in on the program level is almost too low. I think for elected officials, it's the big picture. What does this mean? What are these? And then, the way this becomes a real policy tool is to be able to come back and give your staff parameters. Say, you know what? For example, we understand these. Why don't you bring back to us all the programs, or we would like recommendations and the list of programs that meet this criteria? We're not mandated to do. Other people do it, and we don't charge a fee. Bring us that list back so that we can look at it and talk about it. We may decide, you know what? This particular program, providing doggy doo-doo pickup bags, doesn't meet the criteria, but we think it's really important, we want to keep doing it anyway. So, you can use that as a policy tool to give your, to have your staff do the work, that then they bring back to you, so that you're having the substantive discussions, rather than $302 line item kind of things. If that makes sense.
And I would just offer, there are ways that we've seen other organizations give the high-level information to the council. So, I think there are all sorts of ways, depending on your questions and your needs, that we can focus that. So, whatever seems to make the most sense to guide your discussions better. I think there are lots of options that are available in terms of disseminating information.
Winnet, do you have a comment?
And just to add on to that, it, our timeline is such that we will be through this process in, beginning in January, and be able to provide you with that information, and then get those questions from you, and make sure that we're focusing on the areas that everyone on the council wants to focus on, and have those conversations as a group. And so, we will obviously bring forward the graphs and the charts and all of that, be able to answer your questions, and then we'll continue to maintain the tool and, and update it.
Did you, did you, are you satisfied with that answer, Sheri? I mean...
Well, until we really get going.
Well, until you get into it, it's very difficult to know. But I can't imagine that we'll be just, tell me this isn't, so, I mean, we're just going to hit a work session, and then all of a sudden, it's all going to be shown to us. That, that's not the program, so...
Yes, that's my, I just really...
Yeah, that's what I, okay. So, we walk in here, and there's the new information, and you know how that's going to go. So, I guess it's, it's the, it's the depth of information we've given during the week, during the month, before we sit down at the table.
Yes, yeah, we will provide you with an overview of all of this, and then, as you look at those graphs, you can say, you know, this is where I want you to focus your time, and bring us back more in-depth information on these areas, like Ms. Novak was mentioned as examples. So, where do you want to spend your time? Because there is a lot of information in here, and we can slice it and dice it a variety of ways, but we want to make sure we're having the conversations around what you want to focus on as a group. And so, we can, we'll bring that back, but we will give you the information, you'll see this, and then we can slice it and bring back that information.
Joe?
I, I think this is a great tool, but I don't want to assume anything, because you know what that does. But the same token, we will, I guess, still have the ability to take a look at all our fiscal policies, and share we're wearing in compliance. There was no structural deficit, and we're in compliance with our policies, especially setaway funds. Those type of summaries that you show us as well, to make sure that, I, I like this as far as how we reallocate, get the best bang for our bucks, so to speak. But there are certain things on the financial side that I'd like to see, just to make sure that we are in compliance of our...
Yes, just to reiterate, we have, what, 39 budget policies? And through every budget process, we go back through those to advise council, will we be staying within compliance? Even the one that we're out of right now, we should be back in compliance even this year, this fiscal year. But that will be brought before council, unless council certainly has an opportunity to even look at the budget policies for any amendments as well.
I think it does keep us more centered. And the idea that we go home, and all of a sudden, somebody calls us up on the telephone and says, hey, how come you're not doing this? Okay, so immediately, we say, well, we're going to take that step. That's probably going to, we have something now to focus on, to know where we are in information immediately and understanding. So, that's, that's how I see it. And I also see that it should produce a lot of dialogue when you see the programs, and it's all there, and you can, you're not always going to agree with it. And so, but, when you don't agree with it, there's a, there's a, you know, they're going to pull it down, the information, give you better information. There's just no way of us retaining all the information we have to, you know, on all these programs. I don't care what anybody says, you just can't. You're not working with it every day. So, this, you know, you'll get the information, and at the meeting, you'll be able to make those decisions. Joanne, did you have a question?
No, I, I appreciate the presentation. I know this was something that Bill and I attended a mini-session on at the, at the leak. And so, I'm looking forward to it. I think that this is kind of, as you've described it, the other side of the story of the data. So, I, I appreciate it, thank you.
The other thing that comes to mind is, is verification to the public. We get, you know, complaints, we get bloggers, we get everything, and, and they can put down whatever they want. But this absolutely says what it is. And so, that gives us information then to, to give to the public, and reassure them that this is why, and, and the needs and so forth. Wally?
Okay, well, I have a couple of concerns. Our council is not political. We, we, we're nonpartisan. So, we don't draw lines, and we get along very well, and we talk about everything. However, I wanted to know, once this is done, are we going to be able to actually see what the rankings are, what the programs were, what you've cut out? I have a real tough time, well, I don't have a real tough time. I tell anyone that asks me a question, if I didn't vote on it, I can't defend it. And that's my standard. If they complain about anything, unless I voted on it, I have no comment. So, I want to be able to understand, while you've got all the department heads, are all the departments now identifying their programs, figuring out if they, what of the core values in our strategic plan, they fall under? And they're going to give a number, then we're not in the number process at all. Is this correct? We're just going to get it when it's done, and then we are to make the determination if we think it's a go or not. Is that basically cutting down to the bottom line?
Winnet, why don't you answer that?
Yes, you will get to review all of this, and then ask questions on it. So, it's a multiple review process. The department directors do the scoring, and there's going to be another review on that, an executive team review. And then, as we bring this forward, if you see something up there in Quartile Three, and like to know what that means, and what's under there, and have discussions around it, and even ask us, well, where did you come up with this? And why did you see it this way? And then, we can, we can have conversations around that. So, you have the opportunity to ask the questions on the scoring.
Yeah, but we're not scoring it at all.
You are not scoring it, no.
I would just say, you know, there's a difference. I think it makes us more transparent and accountable to our citizens, because rather than saying, let's take 10% out of travel and training, or let's eliminate office expenses, we don't know how that really impacts what it is we do. Where if, and what, for me, what this process does is turn all that data into information that I can use to make an informed decision. So, then, I know, you know what? We decided to take the dollars out of Program X and invest it in Program Y, because we believe it's going to get a higher return on our, on that investment that you're making here. So, I think it gives more information. It's important that you all understand what that evaluation criteria is, those attributes, and understand that, okay, this is what a four means for this, this is what a zero means. Because then, you will have the comfort level of, you'll have a comfort level with the staff scoring, and then you can come back and ask those questions afterwards, which I think is, for me, that is, was a really key part of the process. Well, part of this, I, I can relate it to projects that council, that council comes forth, the staff. And so, this really kind of cued it in. And so, we have sort of prioritized that, okay? We have staff now look, the cost of the, a cost to the staff, the man-hours, and we go through this whole thing. Because you get a lot of requests, and, and people want to help their community, and they want to, you know, someone calls them, this, you don't have this, my city I lived in before has, you've got to do this, you know? And we get that. Well, in this case, staff has a chance to analyze it and bring back that information. We still could say, hey, I don't care how much it costs, we're going to have that program. I don't think that stops us from doing that. But it does make us think about, are we making the best decision? And, and when we make decisions, it's a taxpayer dollar. So, it's a little bit different than, you know, I just had a conversation with staff today, and I said, I want. And they said, what do you mean, you want? It's not you, it's the city. I mean, it was not, well, that was a natural thing for someone to say. We all have these things. But, right, it is not us, it's the city and the best. And so, I think that as much as it's going to kind of, I have to tell you, at the beginning, this, I think it's going to be difficult. Because people have the mindset that they want something to happen, and they don't like it. So, you have to learn to come to terms with understanding it, and prove that maybe your decision isn't quite the best decision to make. And that's hard to do. So, but I think this is going to be really useful. And I, I just, when I finished it, I, I reread it, and I mean, I just kept saying, this is going to be so good for our citizens, because they don't understand the budget. I don't care what anybody says out there. There may be those people that say they're experts on the budget, and they understand everything the, the budget book says, they can read it offline, but they really don't. Because they don't have all of that information that tells you why that costs so much, and where the program was going. So, I think for the council and for the public, it's going to be outstanding. Bill?
Yeah, I'm, Winnet knows how I feel about this, it's just awesome. And I, I did appreciate the presentation that you guys made at the NLC. You know, and as, as I look back and, and look at the consulting work I do now, and, and as a almost 30-year, oh my God, government employee, and now elected, this is, this is what we've probably needed for a, for a very long time. And so, I'm really excited about it. I think we've got a great opportunity as a council to really separate the weeds from the vision in this. We'll have access to it, but the picture will be there, the, this is just ripe with opportunity for us. So, I am very excited, and will do whatever I can to support the effort.
Any other comments? Sherilyn?
Well, I just wanted to say, I felt I had one of those aha moments after I had, had read this, because I think everyone at the table knows, this is one of the places that I felt least competent. But when you take it down to a more tactile, a more associative way of looking at it, and it just makes sense to, to look at your priorities and not, and the 10% across the board has never made any sense to me. So, I'm very new with this. I just came on council in June. So, you can see that, that I, I have been attending meetings since last August. So, the last year's budgeting process was everything painful to me. So, this aha moment, I thought, oh, there is a God, because he is watching over and making it so that I can understand. I, I think that it's, it's quite understandable, which I would never have said before. So, I, I for one, am just really excited as well.
It does take a lot of, one note, and it does take a lot of research on staff's part. You know, when you think of all the information that has to go into this, so, and of course, that's your job, how to train staff to get them into that, to that thinking mode. But it's, if they just know how helpful this will be to the council. Yes, Sheri?
No, I was just going to say, have there been comments from the staff?
We are in the, since so much work has been done by the city council on the strategic action plan, we're just now into the process of identifying programs. Once we go through this process, year after year after year, it's going to become easier. This is the, the initial step of identifying all of those programs. So, we are working with them through the month of September. They're working to identify their programs. It is a lot. And then, they will submit those programs to these guys, they'll review them, make comments, make suggestions on maybe changing or tweaking, go back to the department, so we have their help and support. We're not alone, but I'll say, it is, you know, initially, to get this off the ground, it will be some work, but we all believe it's going to be so beneficial in the end.
They may have some aha moments too.
Yes, I know I'm looking forward to having those conversations and seeing, you know, and, and what we could do better, where we can, you know, help support your strategic initiatives. I think this is an exciting time.
Sheri?
Like I said, I really do like this. I'm, I'm very excited for it. I was just wondering, what is our plan to kind of keep the public updated on how we're switching over, and what this all means as we go through this?
Good question. I'll get back to you next week. No, I'll, I'll work with Romina and her staff to work on the communication strategies of all of this. We'll be back, and we'll walk through the results maps with you, and identify the attributes, and make sure you're comfortable with where we're going with this, and keep you informed as the process proceeds. But we have every intention of using this next budget process.
Great. Any other questions? Well, we appreciate, Kathy especially, you flew from Colorado, and you're going back tonight, and our thoughts and prayers are with the people in Colorado. You know, my daughter lives in Longmont. That's why, when I saw Longmont up there, I was thinking, no, she's fine. But I was thinking about, I knew the past mayor there, and so, discussions about budgets and so forth, and so, and that's a well-run town, and...
They are, and so many of the cities in Colorado that are, just face devastation, this turns their everything upside down.
Oh, yeah.
And again, using tools like this to try and figure out how we go about rebuilding, recovering, and getting back to where we can even function.
Yeah.
Can you imagine starting with nothing, trying to figure this out?
I can't, and Boulder in particular has just been devastated, so...
All the way down the rivers.
Anyway, just let, let them know, we do care, and we're sorry to hear all of that, so. Any other? Well, thank you again.
Thank you so much, we appreciate it.
All right, we still have some more, so, as, looking around the table, you all right? Continue, keep going, everybody? Okay, and if you, you know, you can, okay, am I, am I okay on time, and everything's, no, no, I just want to make sure we don't have to, okay, we're good, all right. So, let's go to item two. The second item is an update on the following. Number one, court caseload over the past six months. Number two, assist, the court provide, assistance the court provides to other departments. And three, the upcoming veterans stand-down and homeless court events the court will take part in. And we have the Honorable Michael Simmonson here. Oh, we do have him here somewhere, right? He's not in court, is he? No, I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
He was trying to do this another night. Well, you guys are running late, you want me to come back?
Oh, I'm, I'm sorry about that, it does. We'll have to tell Judge Simmonson that, we apologize for that when he sits down. You, you never can time these meetings, you know that. If, people that are listening from home, we're just waiting for the judge. Do you want to take a quick five? Do you, is it a need there? I'd hate to have him come in while you get up from the table. Ah, here he is. First of all, Judge, we want, as you walk through, to take your seat, we want to apologize for such a delay for you. We know you've had a busy day, and your time is precious, but thank you very much for staying around to let us go into this part, okay?
Thank you, Mayor.
You're welcome.
Believe me, no apology is necessary, it's my pleasure to be here this evening. I do want to say good evening to everyone, mayor, vice mayor, all council members, city attorney. attorney. As we're all aware, this is really the first of my semi-annual appearances before you. I've been advised by Eddie that apparently you're running unexpectedly very late, and that there's yet another lengthy matter following this, is that correct?
That is not something for you to be worried about at all.
Okay.
We get paid for this, you know, it isn't a lot, but that's our job, and I'm, I'm one of the mayors that say, "You're, you're here till it's done," so...
Okay, good, I like it.
Please, all right.
Would you prefer that I simply open this up to any concerns, issues, or questions that you have at this time? And then if there's time remaining, I could provide some updated statistics?
I think updates first, is that, yeah, I think we'd like information first.
Do you prefer updates first?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, very good. I'll give you the most recent update on savings attributable, attributable to our home detention program. As I'm sure you're all well aware, some years ago, we were among the first jurisdictions to be pioneers in the area of home detention in lieu of actual county jail time, anticipating that this would result in substantial monetary savings on the police department's budget, because theirs is the jail court budget. The most recent statistics that we have available to us are for a fourteen-month period, beginning July first of last year, 2012, to August thirty-first of this year, 2013, that's a fourteen-month period. Our calculation reveals that in that fourteen-month period, we saved the police department's jail budget one hundred and forty-nine thousand, eight hundred and fifty-one dollars and eighty-eight cents. If, if you were to average that over the period of fourteen months, in round numbers, that is a average savings of ten thousand, seven hundred and four dollars per month. And we will continue with the program unless there are any objections to that.
Would you like any discussion on that, since you just finished that? Comments?
No, that's, that's a great deal.
Yeah.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
I'm very impressed by the numbers, so it's, it's good.
Are there any questions about how the program operates, who it applies to, who it doesn't apply to, anything like that that I can answer for?
If there's just, Joe, go ahead.
Just real quick, as, my recollection is, there's certain individuals' medication or medical, you, you can't put them on, or how, how does that work? Who's eligible and who's not eligible for?
The eligibility for the program, really bottom line, is done only with the consent of the prosecutor's office.
Okay.
All right? Now, we do get people occasionally who have some problematic medical conditions, and simply the jail will not accept them.
Okay, that's my fault.
In those ca, in those cases, our practice is, if there's a mandatory minimum that must be served in the county jail, our marshal will book that person directly into the county hospital for that mandatory minimum, and after that, they will go into their own home confinement.
Okay.
Does that reply to the question?
That answers it, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions about the home confinement program?
Any questions, any comments? No?
Okay.
Sure.
How are you doing the twenty percent? Which, because that's...
Yeah, I know what you're asking.
Yeah, you know.
I apply the twenty percent to what is the mandatory minimum that must be served. For example, if you have, and I know you'll know what I'm talking about, if you have a forty-five day sentence with thirty-one possibly suspended, right?
Yeah.
Okay, that leaves fourteen days that must be served. My position is, twenty percent of the fourteen is two-point-eight, which means they serve three in county, and the other eleven are eligible for home detention with the consent of the prosecutor's office.
Thank you, just so people know, that saves us money.
Yes, it does save us money, it saves us a lot of money. Does that answer the question?
Yes.
Okay.
I've got a question.
Wally, how many people are we talking about?
How many people?
Mm-hmm.
Eddie, do we have a stat on that?
Yeah, I just got to go get it.
Okay, let's get it.
Western judicial was six hundred and ninety-two.
Six hundred, okay.
Or six hundred and ninety-two.
Six hundred, okay, that's, that's close enough, Eddie.
Okay, that's close enough, Eddie, we're fine. Okay, does that answer the question, ma'am?
Yeah, for that part.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Okay, is there another part to it?
There will be, good, keep going.
Okay, keep going, okay.
But it's not on home detention, Judge.
Oh, okay.
Okay.
All right, something else. All right. Just a little more on the financial scene. Back at the time that we last met in February, we were in the process of applying to the administration, the administrative office of the Supreme Court of Arizona for some money to assist in the upgrading of the sound system in this room. You, you are probably already well aware of it, but I am proud to announce that as of Tuesday, June eighteenth, and I have the letter, our request for forty-seven thousand dollars was approved for that purpose. Also, at the time of our last meeting, we had petitioned the administrative office of the Supreme Court for thirty-one thousand dollars to go toward a part-time assistant for my staff, which we very desperate, desperately needed. And again, I'm very pleased to announce that pursuant to letter dated July twelfth, which I have in my possession, that thirty-one thousand dollars was also approved by the administrative office of the Supreme Court. Just so that you're aware, this type of money that's available to us when we petition for it, when we ask, it comes out of a fund known as JSEF, which is an acronym for Judicial Collection Enforcement Fund. And the money gets in JSEF in the first place because we pay it in there. Every court is required to pay it in there, it's one of the payouts from money that we collect. So if we collect, let's say, two hundred dollars on a fine, some part of that is going into JSEF, and this is true of every court in the state of Arizona.
Do you mind telling, explaining the, the term JSEF? I mean, where, give me what it stands for, or am I missing something here?
Yeah, it's, it's, it's intended to be a, a grant, which they call Judicial Collection Enhancement Fund.
Okay.
It's intended to be a grant back to the courts. In my opinion, it amounts to the administrative office of the Supreme Court trying to do something along the lines of a reallocation of money. Because whatever it is they collect goes into the fund. But if you wish to use a part of the fund for a purpose, then you need to ask them or petition for it. So that could result in something of a reallocation of the money.
Okay.
But that's what it's designed to do.
Wally? So for every person that's fined, a portion of that fine goes to this?
Yes, ma'am.
And what is the percentage of, towards the fine?
Do you know what goes to JSEF?
Excuse me. Mayor, Councilmember Campbell, it's actually when they go onto a payment contract, it's a twenty dollars. What it is, is we receive eight dollars of that twenty, and the state gets twelve.
So if someone pays, you said by payment, if someone pays in cash in full, then part of that money doesn't go, it's just if we have to, to give them payments out?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thanks.
Right, now, if I may expand on the answer for you, Councilman Campbell, regardless of this JSEF allocation, every fine carries inherent with it an eighty-three percent And that eighty-three percent gets paid out to various other entities and various other funds, all right? So example, as an example, what began as a hundred and ten dollar fine ends up as a two hundred dollar fine, or roughly in round numbers, because there's an eighty-three percent surcharge at it. Although it's our responsibility as the court to collect that two hundred and pay over the eighty-three percent, we don't see any of that eighty-three percent. We only see, when I say we, I mean us, the city of Goodyear, we only see the original hundred and ten dollar base fine.
So is the eighty-three percent set by the legislature?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, I don't want to know tonight, Eddie, but I would like to know where all that money goes. I'm very familiar with how that's done, from being from California, but I'd like to know what we're funding with the money that is collected for the courts. It would be interesting to know. Thank you.
Can we also get the amounts? We can also provide you with amounts that go to each, however it's allocated, if you want to see the amounts, you may know.
Oh, yeah, I just am curious to see what...
Where it's going.
I'm just curious to see what, what funds and what things that we are funding, are we doing it for juveniles, are we doing it for domestic violence, or, or what?
Okay, so your concern is where it's going?
Yeah, where it's going, uh-huh.
Where it's going.
And I think the information would go to all the councils.
Oh, absolutely.
All right.
Absolutely, also the city manager. Councilman Campbell, you just raised the issue of domestic violence. More recently, we are now mandated, mandated for every domestic violence conviction, we must collect an additional fifty dollars that goes to the domestic violence shelter, and we must collect an additional fifty dollars that goes to what's known as the Domestic Violence Victim Confidentiality Fund.
Yeah.
So those two amounts are in addition to any base fine, any surcharges, any twenty-dollar finance fee, or any JSEF.
Got it, thank you.
Does that help?
That helps, that's great information.
Yeah, that's great to know, thank you.
Okay. Now, more recently, we have applied for a, a, what's known as a fill-the-gap grant. Once again, this is a program of the administrative office of the Supreme Court of Arizona, which is designed to help pay for continuing education for the court and court staff. Our current request that's on the table is for a sum of eight thousand dollars, which will go to education for the court staff. The eight thousand will not go toward any education to me or any of our other judges, simply because I have that built into my contract, it's not necessary for us to request that from the administrative office of the Supreme Court. In connection with education, however, I do want to thank Brian. Brian, I want to thank you for your continued and ongoing support of the court, and also in allowing Eddie to get educated. You're welcome. I know you know what I'm referring to, I'm talking about the Certified Public Manager Program, in which I, I understand he was joined by our prosecutor, Mr. Paris Condolos. That's correct. So I do want to thank you for that, and I thank you for your anticipated ongoing support of my staff, thank you very much. One more person I want to thank before I go on, because I just don't want to forget, I want to thank the chief for loaning us Rob. Rob is working out terrifically, I hope you'll allow him to stay here as a member of the court team. He's mastered two things. Number one, the art of gentle intimidation, and number two, the fist in the velvet glove. He's got it. The other thing he's mastered is, throw the judge under the bus. When they ask, "Why am I going to jail?", you know what he says? "The judge said so." All right. But thank you, I mean it seriously. All right, thank you. Okay, now, we have begun participation in two voluntary programs. The first one that I would like to refer to is what is being known as, excuse me, Veterans Stand Down. Veterans Stand Down. This is a specific court date and time, which is designed to aid veterans of all wars, all military veterans of any kind, in resolving misdemeanor-type court issues. Now, there are some parameters as to what can or cannot be resolved in the Veterans Stand Down Court. Now, the judge that will be conducting the court this time around is Judge Elizabeth Finn, who is the chief presiding judge in Glendale. What the jurisdictions, the other jurisdictions, including us, have agreed to do is to swear her in as a special pro tem judge for the purpose of resolving cases on behalf of our jurisdiction, Goodyear. Once again, subject to the limitations that exist with regard to what can and cannot, as a matter of law, be concluded or resolved in the Veterans Stand Down Court. The other program that we're participating in is the Homeless Court. The Homeless Court is a big-time pet project of one of our own Goodyear residents, Judge Davis, who is the chief presiding judge right now of the Maricopa County Superior Court, and also a recently newly-appointed City of Phoenix Municipal Court Judge, in addition. So once again, we have volunteered to participate in this. There will probably come a time relatively soon when I will take my turn in the rotation of the Homeless Court. But in the meantime, the same applies, whatever judge is sitting in the Homeless Court at that particular time, will have the legal jurisdiction, the legal authority, to resolve whatever issues can legally be resolved in the Homeless Court at that time, all right? So these are two programs that we'll be participating in. Now, I do want to comment further with regard to my own continuing professional education. As you know, each time my contract comes up, you provide very generously in it for my continuing education specifically, to make sure that I get the JSEF credits that I need to remain your presiding judge. Two updates on that. Update number one, the second week of August, last month, I had the opportunity to attend a four-solid-day program given on impaired driving at the National Judicial College. And I did attend that, it was attended by approximately thirty-one judges nationally, including judges from the East Coast, judges from Alaska, judges from Hawaii, as well as our two Superior Court of Maricopa County DUI Court Judges, Judge Bernstein and Judge Miller, and also a Chandler JP, Judge Frankel. So four or five of us were all there for this particular impaired driving conference, and that was four solid days, from eight in the morning till five at night, they serve lunch right there at the, at the Judicial College, you don't ever leave the building for any reason, and that's, and that's how they conduct their programs. I did find, I did find the program very beneficial, despite a question posed to me by a longtime defense attorney, you know Tom Scarduzio?
Mm-hmm.
I, I saw Scarduzio, I was having breakfast with Scarduzio before I went, and his question to me was, "What are they going to teach you about impaired driving?" I didn't know how to take that. You can interpret that a couple of ways.
Take it two ways.
Right. But anyway, you know him? No? Okay. Anyway, the other update on the use of my education funds, the first week in October, I will be attending a five-day program, basically a week-long program, once again, the National Judicial College, Management Skills for Chief Presiding Judges. An entire five solid days, once again, Monday through Thursday, the timing is eight in the morning till five at night, you have lunch right there, the last day, Friday, it's eight in the morning to three-thirty in the afternoon. This is really the first opportunity that I've known of, or that I've had, to attend a solid week-long program, where I know the program is going to be of that high quality, and attended by judges nationally. So I, I expect that to be a very beneficial program for me and for the court. My attitude is, if I can learn one major thing and bring it back here, and one minor thing and bring it back here, and improve our court, then it's worth the money. That's, that's my attitude. Okay. Now, I have some statistics for you, I don't know how motivated you are by statistics after that previous presentation. The first thing is this, I call it a bar graph, and the bar graph illustrates our various caseloads for the last five fiscal years. And Eddie, I believe, has, or will be making copies to distribute, it not only shows the total caseload, but in yellow, it shows the percent that is criminal traffic... traffic, the percent that is civil traffic, the percent that is misdemeanor, and the percent that is other types of court matters.
So, excuse me, Judge, do you have totals? I mean, I appreciate you giving it to us for the last five years, but I'm really interested in the last year.
Okay.
How many cases you've had, that sort of thing.
Yes, ma'am.
That's the only way we can really judge how your court's doing.
Okay.
With statistics that are relevant for now.
Thank you. The statistic, the most current statistic we have, thank you, Crystal, is for the fiscal year ended 2012. 2012. Now, let me just give you an explanation, very brief explanation, as to how these statistics are developed. These statistics are not really maintained locally here in our court. These statistics are maintained by the Administrative Office of the Supreme Court of Arizona on our behalf, based on what we're reporting to them every day. Every day. So these are not statistics that we're responsible for maintaining or any other thing. It's all done through the Administrative Office of the Supreme Court of Arizona. For fiscal year in 2012, we show that we handled 8,508 cases. Now statistically, 15.1% of those cases were what we refer to as criminal traffic. All right. What is criminal traffic? Criminal traffic is DUI cases, driving on a suspended license cases, hit-and-run cases, okay? Criminal speeding cases, reckless driving cases. These are the types of cases we refer to as criminal traffic. And once again, it shows slightly over 15%. In other words, you're looking at something close to 1,300 cases mathematically. In terms of civil traffic, we're looking at 71.52%. Civil traffic, then, are the usual things like speeding, failure to control speed to avoid a collision, speeding in a business district, speeding in a residential district, speeding in a school zone, running a red light, running a stop sign, failure to yield, failure to back in safety, improper position for a turn, anything like this. And that shows as 71.52%. And next is misdemeanor criminal, which we're showing at just a slight tad under 12%. In other words, you're dealing with approximately 1,000 cases. Misdemeanor criminal are cases such as, mostly, domestic violence cases, false information to a police officer, shoplifting, trespassing, littering, any of that type of thing that is a misdemeanor crime but doesn't fit within traffic. So we're at 12%. And then there are the balance of cases, which include code violations, city code violations, and other things such as the issuance of orders of protection, the issuance of injunctions prohibiting harassment, that type of miscellaneous judicial function that we perform on a regular daily basis. So that is what the graph reflects, and it does reflect that for the five years up to and including fiscal year 2012.
Excuse me, Joel has a question.
Joe.
Just an observation, Judge.
Sorry, Councilman.
Other than that lovely tie you're wearing today.
Okay, well, we'll trade some. Just bring one in for me.
All right. If I read this correctly, it looks like your criminal traffic kind of holding its own, pretty steady.
Pretty steady.
It looks like the misdemeanor and the non... But it looks like the civil traffic has been dropping significantly since 2009. Is that an accurate? Is that accurate?
Yes, as far as I know, it's accurate. On the other hand, we've seen a steep increase in the number of DUIs.
Okay.
All right.
So what's attributing, what's causing that, or do you know?
Well, I mean, really, it has to do with, I think, enforcement levels of PD and what PD's priority in terms of enforcement and those types of things are. I don't really think the statistic is overwhelmingly significant. It's just a function of enforcement policies of PD and that kind of thing.
Okay. I appreciate it, because like I said, it looks like all the others, especially the criminal, is all kind of holding its own, but the caseload itself overall is, looks like it's dropped significantly since 2009, so.
Yes. If you compare it to 2009, it's down about one-third. Down about a third. Yep. Now, we do also have for you, because Eddie and I felt that you would like a basis of comparison, we have the same fiscal years for our neighbor, the City of Avondale. City of Avondale. And in fiscal year 2012, they were showing 9,361 cases. In other words, that's about 10% more than what we do here. Now, there is also a significant drop in caseload in the City of Avondale. Most of that, I believe, this is my theory, is attributable to the fact that they did away with traffic radar. Right? They did away with traffic radar. So that would account, in my opinion, for that drop in the caseload. If you look at Avondale, back in '08, they had a caseload of 22,000 cases, and now it's down to 9,300. And that's got to be attributable to doing away with the radar. That's the only thing that can be. And again, I believe that Crystal has handed out your copies of these, so you can take a look at those when you'd like.
Yeah, good, thank you.
Now.
Excuse me, Cheryl Lynn has a question.
Can I ask a question? I don't know if it's a question, but the numbers have been significantly declining in caseloads. However, our population has significantly increased. So one would expect there would be an increase. Do you have an observation that might?
All I can say is, it may be the result of, I'm not sure quite how to say this diplomatically. I'll just say it the way I want to say it. It may be the result of better prioritizing in terms of police work. In other words, while we've seen civil traffic cases go down, we've seen DUI cases go up, and we've seen domestic violence cases go up, which signifies to me that PD is putting more of their resources into catching the impaired drivers and into making domestic violence arrests.
I see our chief, please, Chief of Police, is that, yes?
Good evening, Mayor and Councilmembers. And Councilman Holman. That is, that's correct. We have put a priority on DUI cases, and we have one to two officers pretty much doing that full-time. That leaves three to four officers pretty much doing the traffic enforcement. And the size, over the last few years, even before I was here, the size of our traffic unit has varied. There have been times that some of them have been more, or have been pulled more to do patrol duties covering for shortages and patrol. So I would say a lot of that has to do with the priority on DUIs, taking away from some of the civil traffic violations.
Sherry?
And it's my understanding, and the chief and the judge can probably answer, that the crime overall has been trending down the last several years. I think they say it's going up a little bit, but overall, hasn't it been trending down?
As far as traffic crime or crime in general?
In general. The numbers are starting, from the other courts, I know, they said that they've had lower rates as well.
Yeah, and, well, you know, our property crimes, you're talking about crimes in general, not necessarily traffic. Our property crimes, for example, have been declining through last year. Now, we've sort of hit a plateau. Now you're going to see them going back up. Our violent crime is pretty much holding steady, but whereas we still declined in property crimes last year a little bit, other valley cities were already going up. Now we're seeing that. So next year, you will see an increase in property crimes.
Because we're going to start getting more construction, you know, new homes.
Think about it. That was our...
No. I have two sides, so who put their hand up first? Molly?
I just wanted to thank you, Chief, for participating in the DUI task force. We want to get the DUI drivers off the road, and we appreciate all that your department is doing. And as far as the DUI arrests keep going up, that's fine. I'd rather see them arrested than driving out there.
Absolutely. And there are several task forces a year that we participate in. They're grant-funded, they pay our overtime for officers, and those, again, are a priority for us, which is participate in several of those.
Bill?
Chief, but I'm sure you're not saying that traffic and law enforcement is not a priority for the organization, so the driver's out there listening.
Oh, absolutely not, so. We still do a considerable amount of traffic enforcement, even though not DUI-related.
Correct. And I think the evidence of the change into the more of a community policing focus stops or reduces the amount of time an officer spends with a radar gun in his or her hand, and more time that they're driving through the neighborhoods and...
Yeah, absolutely. We do so many community policing programs, our Lids on Kids and all the different programs that we do, we spend so much time at the schools. And again, all those programs are so important to the community, but again, it does take our officers off the road.
And that, I think, makes us a safer community, so I hope those rate high in your performance budgeting process.
Couldn't resist, I'm sorry.
Thank you for pointing that out, Bill.
But not paying for it, the fees are not...
I think we're okay. Go ahead.
Okay. I do want to do one more educational update. I'm a very education-oriented type of guy. Both our court supervisor, Ms. Whalen, and our court administrator are now enrolled in the Leader Institute program. And this is also a program designed and run by the Administrative Office of the Supreme Court of Arizona, and it's designed to provide updated educational programs for our court leaders. So both our court administrator and our court supervisor are enrolled in that program. Once again, thank you for that, Brian. For those of you that may not have already seen it, beginning about 11 months ago, we began to publish and distribute these court flyers as a way of educating the public about where our court is and what our court does, and probably just as importantly, what our court doesn't do, all right? And the hours of the court, et cetera. So hopefully, you each received one of the flyers that you can peruse at your leisure. Before I forget, one more person I want to thank is the city attorney, Mr. Massey. Mr. Massey, I want to thank you for all your ongoing cooperation and your support of the court, and I want to thank you for continuing to allow Assistant City Attorney Rogers to be the liaison with the court and to handle the property hearings. Thank you very much. The court appreciates it. Okay. Questions, please.
Any other questions? I think we questioned during your presentation. We appreciate it again. Thank you for sticking around to be here.
Sure, no problem.
Because you can see by the questions, counsel was interested, and the idea that they wanted the information, I think that's all very positive, so.
I'm always happy to provide information. Part of my job.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it. Have a great fall.
Thank you.
Okay.
Everybody okay to go to the next presentation? Do you want a little break?
Well, it shouldn't be too long.
No, okay. So a very patient staffer has been sitting in the audience. Number three is update on the progress of the Arts and Culture Program, Gailene Oslansky, Arts Culture Coordinator.
Good evening, Mayor, Council. Thank you for having me this evening. I should have brought us some extra caffeine for tonight. I am Gailene Oslansky, the new Arts and Culture Coordinator for the city.
You sure you moved that, excuse me, the microphone closer to you?
Can you hear me? There we go. Gailene Oslansky, the new Arts and Culture Coordinator for the city, and I thank you for the time to kind of give you an update of what's been going on as far as arts and culture and what programs and events we have upcoming. All right, so three areas of focus that we want to talk about tonight is our Arts and Culture Commission, the upcoming events, and how we're going to get the community involved in arts and culture. The Arts and Culture Commission is, we have a retreat planned for September 28th. I'm excited to hear that I have, I believe, four council members, vice mayor and three council members that'll be attending that day with us. At the retreat, we have Bob Booker. He's the director of the Arizona Commission on the Arts. He'll be coming and doing a workshop on cultural tourism and how that can affect Goodyear and, you know, work towards our economic development. We also are going to do a strategic planning session, excuse me, and we're going to talk about our annual public art plan, our commission collateral, you know, how we can get our message out there that the commission is here and what we're doing with arts and culture for the community. And we're going to be discussing our plans for a folk-life festival, which will definitely tie into that cultural tourism aspect there. Along with the retreat, the Arts and Culture Commission is, right now, working with an education partnership. We partnered with a local school. The school teaches 350 Goodyear students. It is Avondale Middle School in the Avondale Elementary School District, but they do have Goodyear students at the school. We had applied for a grant, and we're awarded that grant. We're very excited to be able to do this. This grant was to, it's kind of two layers to it. The first part of it is, there was an in-school portion where teaching artists have come in, and they're going to work with the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade math teachers. And they're doing an arts integration program where they're going to do an art project, but it's not just about the arts. They're going to be able to integrate and teach the math standards through arts. So not only will be impacting the students, we're also influencing the teachers' practices, showing them just another way that they can approach education to improve student achievement. This grant was made possible because there was, the requirement was for an arts organization to partner with a school that was underperforming, and this school did have a D-label. And so that's why we specifically chose that school, and we wrote this program to really benefit them, to try to help them in a way that they couldn't do for themselves at that time. The second part of the program is an after-school theater program, and the Arts and Culture Commissioners are the ones that are going to be running that. We will be doing an eight-week program that meets three days a week after school. The students are going to be working on the production of Wizard of Oz. And so, very excited. That starts, it starts tomorrow, so we're pretty pleased about that. And so, the kids are going to be learning, you know, acting skills, they'll be doing set designs, costume creations. It teaches them leadership skills, it engages them in learning. And this, the whole grant has a lot of measures placed in there so that we can evaluate the impact of it. One measure we're doing is just by looking at attendance to see if the students, if we boosted school attendance by showing them that, you know, there's something exciting to show up and come and do. The other measure we're going to look at is, we're going to follow some of these students because we're going to be working with the sixth through eighth graders, and see if there is an increase in enrollment in the arts programs up at the high school level. Because, you know, we feel that we're showing them that there are areas out there that they can go into the arts as a career choice for them. So this program will culminate with a community performance at Loma Linda Park on November 23rd, and you're all definitely invited. We'll definitely get information out to you, but it'll be an outdoor performance, and the students are very excited to go forward with that. We have some upcoming events that I hope to see many of you at also. Ballet Under the Stars is this Friday evening up in the Estrella Community, Lakeside. Mayor Lord, regrettably, is on vacation, I hear, but Vice Mayor is going to join us that evening and be doing some remarks to the audience, and we appreciate that. Along with the ballet, there's going to be an art walk. Arts of Estrella are going to be out there, and kind of an open-air art walk, very laid-back to kind of fit with the theme of the ballet, that this event is a totally free event for people to come out and just enjoy another level of the arts in our community. Second thing on our list of events is we have Gain coming up on October 19th. And this kind of ties in with the Arts and Culture Commission. At their booth at the Gain event, they're going to do a community art project. And kind of, so you saw, I brought in some... of, so you saw, I brought in some visuals for us. The participants are going to come up, and what this is, is these are pieces of recycled water bottles. And each participant, they'll be bottles that we are having cut in half and using Sharpies and hair dryers and different things to embellish them. They will create individual pieces of art. Each of these pieces will be connected, and this will be assembled into one piece to install. And depending on the end result, what this end product looks like, we'll decide whether it's going to hang up at City Hall or here at the court. We'll find a great community location so that we can have a community event and invite everybody to come out for this art opening when their community project shows. So, one of our, I did a quick sketch to kind of give us a visual as we were talking beforehand. Sometimes it helps to have a visual. All these pieces will be put together into long strands of garland, and there'll be an LED light rope that'll go down through the middle of that. So, not only will it catch the light and reflect the light that's outside of it, you'll also have the interior light that'll reflect and shine through those pieces. So, it's a great way to show that we can take something, reduce, reuse, recycle, all that great stuff. So, I'm excited about this, and everyone that I've talked to about it are eager to kind of get in there and be able to do something. It's just a great way to get our community involved with us.
Looks like it's Adele Chahouli.
Well, in, there's a folder, I don't know if they got it out to you guys. There is a flyer on it, and inside there, it's inspired by Chahouli, so definitely. So, good catch, thank you very much.
I have a shell bowl of his.
Gorgeous stuff, yes. And so, definitely, that's why the idea for it came about was because of Chahouli.
It's fun.
Last thing on this slide is our hot coffee lecture series, and they are going to start back up in October, October 22nd. We have Dr. Eduardo Pagan coming. He is, he was a host on History Detectives on PBS, I don't know if anybody's watched that show before. He's also, he's a professor at ASU West. Very, he takes history and he makes it very relevant and interesting, and so, it's going to be a great lecture. He is working currently on a book about the Pleasant Valley War, and he's going to be talking about the cultural influences that made this war happen, as he said, because it was a crazy time, all the settlers just started killing each other, and he was very excited about that. So, I'm eager to see what he comes about, but he said it was just a very interesting time in Arizona's history, and so, he will be our hot coffee lecturer for October 22nd. On November 12th, we will have another lecture, and it'll be Joe Tyler, and he is a metalsmith. He takes, has botanical-themed metal sculptures that he creates, and he's a public artist, very, very interesting things. Next slide I have here is, you know, how we're really trying to get the community involved in the arts and promoting in Goodyear. One thing we have is, we have the Mayor Select. It's a call for entries is out right now, and it's for high school students. And the high school students are going to be awarded first, second, and third place with scholarship money, that the mayor will be, of course, on the selection panel, and the artwork will be displayed up there in the office. We are going to be kind of asking a couple of our council members to sit with the mayor on that selection panel when we choose those, the artwork for Mayor Selects. The idea for this is it'll be a bi-annual contest, so there'll be a fall call for entries and awards given to first, second, and third place, 750 for first place, 500 for second, and 250 for third place, and it'll be put into a scholarship fund for them. And you can be ninth through 12th grade, you do have to be a Goodyear resident. And then, we'll do this again also in the spring. And so, we're really looking to get this to be this bi-annual process that kind of stays in place, that these students are looking forward to. You know, $500 goes a long ways for a college student wanting to buy some paints and paintbrushes, so very eager to see what the students bring in. The mayor, when we had discussed this, really wanted to make sure that we recognize these artists. So, along with having an art opening for them, once the selections are made, we will bring them to council meeting, probably in January, to recognize them and acknowledge their accomplishments. Next call for entries we have out is the Goodyear 2025 General Plan. We had presented that to you last week. There are awards and a recognition tied into that, too. This is for Goodyear residents of any age. There is the $500 for the winner of the cover page and $100 for the interior pages. And they will also be recognized through coming to council, and their artwork will be displayed at the town meetings that are going to happen starting in January.
And have we gone now for sponsorships on some of this, on the scholarships? Are we working on that?
On the Mayor Select, we do have a sponsor already for the scholarships. We have Palm Valley Pediatric Dentistry, and they sponsored both the fall and the spring for Mayor Select, so very excited that we're already set up, that we're good for this school year.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last thing on here is the Influx Program. We participated, I shouldn't say "we," the city of Goodyear participated in Cycle Three. The installation, you can see the picture up there, was a work by Mary Shandell, and it was on Westwood Avenue. This year, we're going to be also participating in Cycle Four. We have partnered with Vestar, and we are going to have an art installation in their development there at Yuma and Cotton Lane, Canyon Trails Town Center. And there was a Sports Authority store there, one of their anchor stores that's been empty for a while, and so, they're very eager, and they have partnered with us and agreed to have this influx hung at their location, and I think it's a great spot for good visibility. We'll get lots of recognition along with that one. All right. That's what we have going on for arts and culture at this point. Very excited that you guys are so supportive of the arts and that you have this continued support that you give us for arts and culture in the city.
Great, thank you. Sherry?
Can I just say, this is great, and it's really exciting, because we keep talking about something our city can be known for, and this is the kind of cool, eclectic, funky, fun stuff, the arts, that people like to come to cities to, so thank you.
You're welcome. I'm very eager to keep adding programs and doing more with the arts so that we are recognized for that.
Any other comments?
Well, Gailene, thank you so much. I'm so excited that you are where you are right now, because you have the big picture of what we're trying to accomplish, and we thank you, and we, the Hot Topics, it has long awaited by everyone in Goodyear. We've been asked once, we've been asked 15 times, when were we going to start it again? So, we look forward to that series and all the wonderful, innovative things that you're doing. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm glad to be here as well.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay. That takes us, that's the last item on the work session, and as you know, we're going to go into a special meeting. And before I adjourn this meeting and ask for a motion, if you'd like a break before we start that special meeting, we'll assume that, okay? So, I don't think we have to deal with information items or anything like that, so this meeting is adjourned. All right, now, I'm going to call to order a special meeting, Monday, September 16th, and we are all around the table. And so, I need a motion, right, in a second? So, I need a motion to go into a special meeting. Do I hear a motion?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
I heard a motion by Councilwoman Campbell, and a second by Vice Mayor Pizzillo. All in favor, say aye.
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 Madam Mayor, you can do a roll call.
A roll call, thank you very much. Roll call?
Aye.
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 Now, what we'll do is, before you go in, go ahead and take your break, 10-minute break, is that what you need, or...
Should we just be back in the room?
Yeah. Okay. Yeah, we're going in the back room.